A regular meeting of the City Council was held in person and remotely via Zoom on Thursday, February 9, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. for the purpose of transacting any and all business. Notice of this meeting was posted on February 7, 2023, at 8:54 a.m. This meeting is being recorded and is live on SATV. Councillor's absent, Councillor Watsonfelt. Council President Stott presided. Councillor Merkel moved to dispense with the reading of the record of the previous meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. And I request that everyone please rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councillor Marcello.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public testimony. This evening for public testimony, we have one member who, or one request for public testimony to be read into the record. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read the letter from Mr. LePointe.
Dear Salem City Councillors, before you tonight is an order to accept a donation in the amount of $4,500 from the Friends of the Salem Council on Aging that has been requested by the Program Director of our Council on Aging. This donation will provide Easter meals for our Salem homebound seniors. Salem has many seniors that are not fortunate enough to celebrate Easter Sunday along with family and friends. This donation from the Friends was made possible by the generosity of those who contributed to our appeal letter program sent out annually and our fundraising events. We hope that a favorable vote on this matter by you, the City Council, will make these meals possible for these seniors. The Friends of the Salem Council on Aging are a 16-member board of lifelong Salem residents that are exceptionally dedicated to serve. We are committed to assist our Council on Aging and our precious 10,000-plus seniors. In our opinion, the seniors are our most valuable asset. We, the Friends, want to thank you in advance for accepting this donation. We also want to wish you all a wonderful Easter with your family and friends. Yours truly, Andrew J. LePointe, President, the Friends of the Salem Council on Aging.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thank you, Mr. LePointe, for your comment. First up, we have hearings.
We have an order from National Grid to install conduits on Bayview Circle.
Do we have anyone appearing in favor on this matter? If you are attending in Zoom and wish to talk, please use the raise hand function. User one, we are going to be allowing you to talk. Please. Okay. So we're going to go with the recognized name first via Zoom. Savita, if you can, please state your name and address for the record and provide your comment.
Barbara St. Pierre.
That's user one.
Hi, Ms. St. Pierre.
Yes.
Ms. St. Pierre, we're just going to have the representative from National Grid speak first, and then we'll come back to you, okay? Savita, you should be able to speak. You do need to unmute yourself.
Go ahead, Savita.
Is the TV muted? We heard Ms. St. Pierre. Savita, are you there? We'll go to Ms. St. Pierre, who I believe had her hand raised as well. If you could allow her to talk, you can unmute yourself, Ms. St. Pierre, and please state your name and address for the record. You do need to unmute yourself, and then you should be able to talk. Okay, anyone in Zoom land that, if you wish to talk on this matter for installing the conduit on Bayview Circle, whether you are appearing in favor or appearing in opposition, or if you have a comment and you are attending via the Zoom meeting, just use the raise hand function. We will allow you to speak. Nope, no hands raised. Yep, okay.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry, but the phone doesn't stay unmuted.
Weird, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it keeps muting me, and then I have to press star six because I can't, you can't hear me. It doesn't stay unmuted.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Could you please state your name and address for the record, and then your comment?
20 Bayview Circle.
And your name?
Barbara St. Pierre.
Okay, thank you, Barbara.
Okay. I don't have a comment, I just wanted to listen in for project.
Thank you. Yep, so this is the project to install four feet of conduit on Bayview Circle, which is from the pole to the residence at, I believe it was number 19, at number 19. We do have a representative from National Grid on the phone. Hopefully, we can get her to talk in the next moment.
Okay, if it's for 19 Bayview Circle, then that's fine. I don't have any opposition for it, so.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. St. Pierre. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Savita, we're going to try to promote you to panelist. Savita, you're being promoted to panelist. When you are back on, you should be able to unmute yourself to speak.
She's got her hand raised.
She has her hand raised.
I'm pretty sure she hates us with the strength of a thousand songs. I don't even think she's confused, I think she's fucking homeless.
Okay, is Savita in the meeting?
You can either talk, Savita, or if you want to use your video as well, it's up to you, but you should be able to speak. We can see you, Savita, can you speak?
I can see her.
We can't hear you.
Savita, we're going to hold this and continue with the agenda if you can try to dial in, maybe, and I will also comment that our next meeting, I believe we have three hearings that we will be calling. I will just request now that we have a representative in person for those, since there are three of them. But for now, we can't hear you, so we will need to move on. If there's a motion on the floor to, I guess, table this and move, Councillor Dominguez moved to. Savita, if you leave, you can join back in as an attendee and try again. Councillor Dominguez moved to table this item and continue with the agenda, seconded by Councillor Hapworth. All those in favor? Okay, we will move, and Savita, if we see you dial back in, we will come back. Moving on, we have appointments and reappointments.
We have the mayor's appointment of James Bostick of 32 Bar Street, Salem, to serve on the City of Salem Public Art Commission with the term to expire on February 9, 2024.
Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott, I move this to be held under the rules.
Councillor Hapworth moves that this be held under the rules. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter is held. Communications from the mayor.
We have an order that the sum of $150,000 is hereby appropriated within the capital outlay account to be expended by the Park and Department for costs associated with fees to structural repairs at the Museum Place Garage.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President, I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor McLean moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Councillor McLean?
I move for adoption.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion?
Thank you. I think everybody is probably familiar with the ongoing repair work at the Museum Place Garage downtown. In the process of conducting the work, some additional structural problems were found while they were working, and so this is to help pay for a beam that was replaced and finish the construction.
Any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor of Councillor McLean's motion for adoption? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order that the sum of $42,740 is hereby appropriated within the capital outlay account to be expended by the Building Department for costs associated with the emergency boiler replacement at City Hall and related work.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, I move for suspension of the rules.
Councillor McLean moves for suspension of the rules, seeing no objection. Councillor McLean?
I further move for adoption.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion?
Thank you, Council President. The boiler in the building that we're sitting in right now failed and dismembered. It had to be replaced, it was replaced, we need to pay for it.
Any further discussion on the motion for $42,740 to be appropriated? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order to accept the donation from Friends of the Salem Council on Aging in the amount of $4,500 for 250 Easter meals for isolated or homebound seniors.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President, I move for adoption.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion?
This is the matter that our public comment was directed to, and as always, we, with gratitude, accept donations from our Friends of the Salem Council on Aging, which helps support the well-being of our seniors in the community.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councillor Marcello?
Thank you, President. I feel like I have to step in and be Counselor McCarthy right now and say that all these meals get delivered by volunteers, and they are still looking for volunteers, so if anyone has any time, they can contact Rosanna Donahue and deliver a few meals. It's actually a really nice thing to do, I did it at Christmas time, and I will definitely be signing up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott, I had to agree with the good Councillor Warren Three Marcello. I have to say that I had the good experience to be volunteering for many, many years, and the satisfaction that we see in the faces of so many seniors when we come to their doors is amazing. But I wanted to point that the good work and the kind donation that the good Friends of Council on Aging had done to this organization is tremendous, so I want to thank them, and I also wanted to make sure that we get some volunteers to help out and make sure that we make other families happy during those holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion for adoption to accept the donation of $4,500 for 250 Easter meals? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries, with gratitude? Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order to accept the donation of $1,950 from Marie Fouhi. The donation is to be deposited in the Pox and Recreation Donation Fund for a Classic Series bench.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President, I move for adoption.
Councillor McLean moves for adoption, under discussion?
As always, we are grateful for those who make donations to help support the well-being of anybody in our community, but it's always a little bit lovely but bittersweet to see a bench being donated, but it's a wonderful thing to do, and it contributes to the community at large, and so we thank Marie Fouhi for this donation.
Any further discussion on Councillor McLean's motion for adoption to accept the donation of $1,950? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries, with gratitude? Further communications from the mayor?
We have an order that the Actumere is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Salem, and needs an agreement with Justin Matera at 57 Memorial Drive, except for the attached agreement and shown on the attached plan entitled "Easement Plan 57 Memorial Drive."
Councillor Marcello?
Thank you, President. I move for adoption by roll call vote.
Councillor Marcello moves for adoption by roll call vote, under discussion?
Thank you, President. I can actually go either way on this, but I will present the information that I learned today from the city solicitor. So the easement agreement was requested by Mr. Matera and consists of 4,500 square foot parcel of land to allow him to build a staircase and a fixed pier and seasonal gangway. So back in 1945, the city subdivided the land along what was then Alms House Road to create housing for veterans, and for some reason, these plots of land did not go all the way to the high water mark. Usually, that's the case, usually the land does go right to the high water mark, but for some reason, they chose not to do this. And I asked why, whether this was an intentional decision, and we just don't have that information right now. But if you look on Google Maps, you will see that several properties around there do have stairways and docks out to the water. So he's requesting an easement to be able to do that because it is on city-owned land. Mr. Matera's attorney does note that he will be making a substantial investment in the property, including bank stabilization, as well as a means of access from his property to the water. There was a note at the end of Attorney Grover's letter requesting the easement that this, quote, "will also establish a valuable precedent for other owners who are occupying city-owned property to take similar action," end quote. And so I did ask the city solicitor about this, and she said that she's not had the opportunity to look into the deeds for those properties, she has no other time to research that, but it is on her list to do. So I feel confident that we will look into if there's any other issues along that land. It goes back so far that there could be already agreements with the city for those properties, we just don't know. So that being said, I'm okay with approving this, but I will go by what the rest of the council wants.
Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. Based on what Councillor Marcello said, the fact that this will create a precedent that will actually get some money out of the deal, I'm fine with voting this because I don't think anything substantial is going to change in a committee meeting. So I think we should move for adoption tonight.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. Though I do agree with all the commentary so far, I think, in consideration of the fact that there may be some further information that may be uncovered by the city solicitor's work relative to the other deeds, and the fact that we are unclear as to why this was not made part of the parcel to begin with, I would hope that we would send it to committee just to give some time for the solicitor to complete those investigations, not because I think we're going to do anything substantial of our own in the meantime.
Councillor Varela?
Thank you, President Stott, I would agree with Councillor McLean on this, that since there's a little bit of clarity that needs to be discussed, that I would like to see this go to committee. Thank you.
Councillor Marcello?
Thank you, President. I should be a little bit more clear on this. So the research is detailed, I don't think it's going to be a couple of weeks. She has one person in her department, her alone, and that's why she hasn't been able to do this. So I don't know if it's the intention to put this in committee for a couple of months. I just want to put that out there, just to kind of think about that, and if there were other easement issues, it shouldn't affect this person's ability to get his easement. He did pay for the assessment that was done on the property, the city hired an assessor, he paid for that work to be done, and it's a fair market value for that land. But again, I just want to make sure that I put all the information out there. Thank you.
Councillor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. I agree with Councillor Marcello that the work has been done on this particular easement and the work done by the lawyer and the city. I don't think it should be held up because of research that would be done on other properties, so I would be comfortable with adopting this by roll call vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, President Stott, I too looked at the Google Maps, and if anybody does, they can see that all of his neighbors have nice dogs and nice peers around them, and there's no reason why he shouldn't be able to have the same privilege, and he's doing it the right way. So I say let's vote tonight and let him get on with his project.
So there's still the one motion on the floor for adoption by roll call vote? Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councillor Varela?
No.
Councillor Varela?
No.
Councillor Presnuski?
Yes.
Councillor Marcello?
Yes.
Councillor Merkel?
Yes.
Councillor McLean?
Yes.
Councillor Hapworth?
Yes.
Councillor Dominguez?
No.
Councillor Cohen?
Yes.
And Councillor Stott?
Yes.
Thank you. On the easement agreement with Justin Matera of 57 Memorial Drive, we have nine members voting, one absent, seven voting yea, two voting nay, the matter carries. Shall we go and do a check-in to see if Savita is able to talk?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor to move back to, Councillor Dominguez moves to move back to hearing?
Page three.
Page three.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Marcello. So we're now back to the hearing for National Grid to install conduit on Bayview Circle. Savita, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand, you will be allowed to unmute yourselves.
I did. Hello, can everyone hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Savita Mahabair Sheehy, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is for an upgraded service to number 19. Right.
Thank you, Savita. Can you tell me how long the conduit is expected to be?
Yes, it's supposed to be five feet.
Five feet, thank you. Any further comments? Anyone else from the public wish to speak in favor or in opposition to this request to install conduit at 19 Bayview Circle? Cheryl Gideon, we're going to allow you to speak if you would like to state your name and address for the record and provide your comment?
Yeah, hi, this is Brian Gideon, actually, I live across the street from that address. Curious to know, it's five feet, where's it going? Is it going 100 feet in the other direction, or what is it exactly?
Sure. Savita, are you able to answer that question?
It's going five feet towards number 19 Bayview Circle to upgrade their service.
So where is it starting from, Savita?
It's starting from pole 3685, which is on the, if you're facing the street, the right-hand corner of the property.
And is it going underground, above ground?
It is going underground from that pole to their property, to their house.
Any further comments or questions? Last call, if you're on Zoom and wish to speak on the matter, please use the raise hand function. Okay, thank you, Councillor Marcello.
Thank you, President, I move to close the public hearing.
Councillor Marcello moves to close the public hearing. All those in favor? All those opposed? Public hearings closed. Councillor Marcello?
And I move that this be granted.
Councillor Marcello moves that these be granted. Any discussion? Nope. Councillor Marcello moves that this be granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter is granted. Thank you. Thank you, Savita and the public for sticking around for that one. And moving back to page?
Seven.
Page seven, Mayor's informational page, none. Motions, orders, and resolutions. I'm sorry, Councillor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott. Order to the Committee on Government Services, co-posted with the Committee, the whole, meet with the city engineer to discuss trash pickup fees and their impact on renters. And I move for adoption.
Councillor Hapworth moves for adoption, under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. This is a topic that comes up semi-regularly, particularly last year when we raised the rate for non-owner-occupied buildings from $20 to $20.50. Salem has sort of a unique ordinance which sets a trash pickup rate for non-owner-occupied buildings, currently $20.50, and $0 for owner-occupied buildings. So for instance, my house, we are owner-occupied, our neighbors are renters, we put out the same trash barrels, it's the same trash pickup. The landlord of my neighbors pays $20.50 per unit per month, we pay nothing. And that's, I guess, on its face unfair and inequitable to renters. The argument, which is a valid argument, is that that cost is passed along to the renters from the landlord in some fashion. So annually, as a city council, we are effectively raising the rents of renters $20.50 per month. So there is obviously going to be feelings and thoughts around this, I think that it's appropriate to send this to committee, have some discussion, and then potentially move to change the ordinances if there is a will to do that.
Any further discussion? Councillor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I'm going to vote no on this. As the recycling coordinator, I had lots of meetings with landlords, landlord associations. I do not believe it's unfair on value that there's a cost that's passed along for this reason. Most tenants have leases, it is not allowable under most leases in Massachusetts to change the rent during the term based on an issue like this. And I do believe that most property owners, landlords, charge what they either think they can get, or what's reasonable, or both. There's been a lot of discussion online, I have, as a a lot of discussion online. I have, as a counselor and before, offered to meet with people, to discuss this, have a cup of coffee, and have never gotten a response that they would be willing to do it. So I'm not sure that the city engineer would be the appropriate person to discern what the impact on renters is. I think there's a lot of other information that would come from other parties. And although this may go to committee, and I'd be glad to have the same discussion there, I am going to vote no to adopt this order.
Any further discussion? On Counselor Hapworth's motion that the Committee on Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet with the city engineer. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Hapworth?
Thank you, President Stott. Ordered the Committee on Government Services, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet with members of the Planning Department and the Community Impact Unit to discuss single room occupancy. I'll amend this to say the Committee on Community and Economic Development co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet with members of the Planning Department. And I move for adoption.
Counselor Hapworth moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. Had a conversation with Counselor Prozinski this morning. I think I agree that it is a more appropriate place to put this in Community and Economic Development than in Government Services. This showed up very briefly in the great presentation that the Salem Police Department gave on the issue of homelessness in Salem and what they're doing around that. And very briefly on the board, it did mention single room occupancy as the loss of single room occupancy as a major contributing factor to homelessness nationwide. And if you'll remember, this is part of our housing roadmap, was single room occupancy and just dealing with that as an issue. Just some brief history on this topic. For most of Salem's history, lodging houses, boarding houses, or what we know as single room occupancy, has played a crucial role in housing for people at all stages of their life, from young people moving into a city for the first time, to widows or to people on the verge of homelessness. The difference between nothing and a room with a door that locks makes a major impact on people's lives and outcomes. When we instituted zoning in Salem, we essentially outlawed it across the city for new construction or for new permitting. It is allowed by, we would have to go through the ZBA within the R2, the B1, and the B2. Even the Women's Friends Society, which we all point to as a success story in Salem, would be illegal to build today within the B5. So I think this is a valid, this is certainly a complicated topic, but I think it's a valid topic to begin discussions on and potentially take action on.
And further discussion? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I had a brief discussion with Counselor Hapworth yesterday. I very much agree that this is something that we need to talk about, and whether it's to potentially create some rules to enable these that would make for more legitimate single-use occupancy, I think is a great idea. So I want to thank Counselor Hapworth for bringing this order.
Any further discussion? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. I want to also express my gratitude for bringing this forward. I look forward to having this discussion. Any options we can for more affordable options is welcome. I'm on the Board of the Women's Friends Society, and I know how helpful those low rents are to the residents, and thank you.
Any further discussion? So Counselor Hapworth, just confirming that you amended it to the Committee of Community, the Committee of Community and Economic Development.
Correct.
Co-posted with Committee of the Whole to meet with members of the Planning Department and the Community Impact Unit to discuss single room occupancy. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Merkel?
Thank you. Ordered that the Department of Planning and Community Development send a report to the city council in six months and 12 months on how many ADU permits are in process, have been processed, or units created after the second passage of the current zoning amendments to the accessory dwelling units and the affordable accessory dwelling units. The report should also include a summary of parking issues and any other problems or concern, and I move for adoption.
Counselor Merkel moves for adoption. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. This order was submitted by Counselor Watsonfeld to offer my own comment after the many discussions regarding the ADU changes over the past couple of months and concern for the impact they will have. I support this request being made so the council can evaluate the effectiveness of the changes made in creating affordable housing.
Further discussion? Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I love this idea of coming back with more information, but I would like to also amend it, if possible, to include the amount of money given towards the construction grants and the number of people that are getting the reduction in property tax because of the ADUs.
Counselor Marcelo moves to amend to include the report to include and grant money provided and property tax. What's the word?
The construction grants.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Dominguez. Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. I'm also going to vote against this order for the following reasons. I do not think it's specific enough. I do not think it's appropriate to have a department include summaries of other problems or concerns. I don't know where they're going to get those. I think the Building Department is the issuer of the permits. But I do want to mention the two main reasons that I'm not favoring this. Although I wasn't able to participate because I had to recuse myself, this body passed some enhancements to the short-term rental ordinance because of the lack of enforcement, and yet no such report was requested. There has been virtually no enforcement. And what troubles me, and I brought this up at the last meeting about the ADUs, is that I'm very concerned about existing tenants. I'm less concerned about, although it's important that we address future tenants and create some vehicles and tools to create more housing, the amount of existing tenants that are being displaced without any oversight, review, or enforcement is disturbing to me. I also went on to the Building Department page, and, you know, the Planning Department presented us with some tools to perhaps increase the amount of ADUs that were going to be done. We already know that we have the building costs and the tax credits, but the permitting process is really cumbersome. It requires a lot of work that maybe people here in the public are not aware of. It could be very difficult for some people who think that, oh, I can, you know, get $20,000 to add a bathroom, or get a tax credit, and then they go through the process and may not be able to fulfill the process. So I'm more concerned about those things than to get a report every six or 12 months. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Counselor Watsonfeld's motion that the Department of Planning and Community Development send a report to the city council in six and 12 months?
Do you need to vote on the amendment first?
Yeah. Okay. So we'll vote on the amendment to add the grant money provided for property tax exemption and grant money provided by, motion by Counselor Marcelo, seconded by Counselor Dominguez. All those in favor? All those opposed? Amendment carries. On the motion for adoption for the order that the Department of Planning and Community Development send a report to the city council? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further motions, orders, and resolutions? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. City of Salem, February 9, 2023, the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, met to, that the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet to review the compensation of the mayor, Chapter 2, Section 142, and that a recommendation be reported out to the city council no later than the first meeting in April. The committee shall recommend the salary of the mayor for the subsequent two fiscal years. And I move for adoption.
Counselor McLean moves for adoption. Under discussion?
No great discussion, as the order makes clear this is something that we are instructed to do by virtue of city ordinance, and so we shall do it.
Any further discussion? On the motion that the Committee on Administration and Finance co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meet to review the compensation of the mayor. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Counselor Dominguez?
Counselor Stott?
Thank you. Ordered that the city council reelects Counselor Cohen and Counselor Watsonfeld to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees per Ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 1002. The city council shall annually elect two members of the city council to serve for a term of one year. The city council president or designee shall serve for a term of one year. No trustee excluding the mayor shall serve for a term exceeding two years, and that their terms expire on December 31, 2023, and I move for adoption.
On Counselor Stott, move for adoption. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is an order that we do every year. We reappoint two counselors from our body to serve in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I have requested Counselor Cohen and Counselor Watsonfeld to continue their service on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. This is actually my first year serving, and the first meeting, one of the topics was the prioritization of the items that was discussed last year. So I feel that it's really important to kind of continue the momentum that was given and continue the knowledge that is provided with these two counselors and the history that they have on the board to really hopefully get some great items out of there this year and continue moving forward. And I thank them for their service.
Any further discussion? Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Dominguez. I want to thank President Stott for designating me as Counselor Marcelo did last year. There's a couple of things that people should know. We, as a body, allocated $1 million for the trust fund, and when, and hopefully, when hopefully the condo conversion tenant protection ordinance goes through, there will be a vehicle for that trust fund board to potentially be one of the first refusals to be able to purchase properties if the first refusal is not done by the current tenant of the property. And I think that's really important. And in the year that I've been on the trust fund board, and I know Counselor Hapworth has been on it as well, I feel like it's a really dedicated group of people in addition to the counselors, and I think we have a lot of really important work that we're going to push back to the council this year. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion of Counselor Stott on reelect Counselor Cohen and Counselor Watsonfeld to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board and trustee. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries.
Any further motions, orders, resolutions? Committee reports. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Council President. On February 9, 2023, I offer this following report for the Committee on Administration and Finance, to whom was referred the matter of $62,084.42 in appropriations to various departments for mid-year personnel adjustments due to the increase in minimum wage and other costs, has considered said matter and would recommend approval. And I move for acceptance of the report.
All those in favor of acceptance of the report? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you, Council President. We had this meeting just earlier this evening at 6 o'clock, and we had a brief conversation with our city finance director and the mayor, who gave us a bit of explanation about how wages are being adjusted. As I just said, some of them are due to an increase in minimum wage that was not completely accounted for in the initial budget calculations. Some of it is due to the settling of union contracts, which are retroactive and require us to essentially make whole those employees. Some of it is due to overages in previous selection costs, which we need to cover, and some of it is adjustments that were made based on salary surveys to make sure that we were staying competitive with some of our most important staff, which I think everybody agreed is really important as we manage transition and leadership in our executive department, and we want to make sure that the good people who are doing the work in the city stay here and keep on doing that work while we navigate this transition. So I move for adoption of the recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? On Counselor Cohen's motion to adopt the recommendation for $62,084.42 appropriation to various departments for mid-year personnel adjustments. All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports? Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. The Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, to whom was referred the matter of granting certain licenses, has considered said matter and would recommend that the licenses be granted. It's upon broker license. Sea worms, secondhand valuables, and a tag day.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? On adoption of the recommendation, any discussion? No sea worm discussion? On adoption of the recommendation for granting the certain licenses, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further committee reports? Counselor Merkel?
Thank you, President Stott. The Committee of the Whole, to whom it was referred, the matter of overview of Destination Salem's work, as the city's destination marketing organization, has considered said matter and recommend the presentation be received and filed.
On acceptance of the report, all those in favor? All those opposed? On adoption of the recommendation, under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. Kate Fox is the executive director of Destination Salem, and she gave a very thorough overview of Destination Salem's work to market, promote, and manage tourism here in Salem. Ms. Fox discussed the Destination Salem budget, the new information center with restrooms, the new Salem Heritage Trail, and the Haunted Happenings tourism increase over the years. She also talked about the Placer AI, our data tracking service, as well. This was on February 1. The counselors and public asked great questions and prompted discussion on the impact of tourism on residents, our businesses, and our infrastructure. I'm grateful for the time and work that Ms. Fox put into this very thorough presentation, and I move for adoption.
Any further discussion? I'd also like to thank Ms. Fox for her presentation. It was very thorough. And a shout-out to the upcoming Committee on Economic Development meeting that we have scheduled for February 27, which I believe will really be a continuation of that discussion. On adoption of the recommendation, that the presentation be received and filed, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Communications from city officials?
We have a communication from the planning board relative to the proposed amendments to zoning ordinance and map change for 67 Derby Street.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that this be received and filed.
Counselor Marcelo moves that this be received and filed. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor that this be received and filed? All those opposed? Matter is received and filed. Further communications from city officials?
It's not a communication, but we need to vote on the zoning ordinance now.
Zoning ordinance and map amendment to rezone parcel at 67 Derby Street. Counselor Marcelo?
I move for adoption for first passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Marcelo moves for adoption for first passage by roll call vote. Under discussion?
Thank you, President. So this is the small piece of land at 67 Derby Street to change from an R2 to an industrial use. At both the joint public hearing and the subsequent planning board meeting, concerns were raised about the tree and shrub- concerns were raised about the tree and shrub buffer that extended from Derby Street to the existing fence. We exist, we discussed the use as currently planned right up to, like, inside the fence and what was going to happen there, and, uh, representatives told us that this is an area for, for storage, horizontal storage of the blades. So we are all aware of the concerns from the neighborhood residents there, that they want to make sure that that buffer is, is maintained and maybe even enhanced. And, um, I agree with that. I think everyone agrees with that, and that took up a lot of discussion at the planning board meeting as well. But before us right now is a zoning change, and it's a pure zoning change. The, um, planning board, on the other hand, holds all the cards when it comes to the shape of this project and, um, what, what that buffer is going to look like, what, if anything, they're going to be taking down and replacing it with. And so I feel pretty comfortable. I've witnessed this process before, the back and forth that happens with the planning board. I, I personally feel comfortable that the planning board will do their job and make sure that at least what's there is kept and hopefully enlarged so that, so that the, the neighbors around that parcel are, um, shielded, I guess, from the industrial use of that property. And I know also from being in meetings during this year with the representatives from Crowley and from different department heads talking about the site planning for this, for this parcel, that the, the owner also is very concerned about that. They not only want the property to look attractive from the Derby Street side, they also want to make sure that the residents aren't impacted from the day-to-day use. And so, you know, both sides, along, along the side street and along Derby Street, they are working very hard to create a substantial buffer there. So I just want to make sure that that's out there, that we are considering. I know that this council is definitely considering the residents, and I know from listening to the planning board meeting that that's their, that's a high concern of theirs to make sure that that buffer is in place. Thank you.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, President Stott. Um, as the council liaison to the planning board, they asked me to represent some of what they discussed at their meeting, and as Counselor Marcelo said, they feel it provides an amenity, this space, to the community and is critical in shielding, abutting residents from the activity that will be undertaken at the site. Concerns about noise impacts were raised, and the idea was floated about restricting activity away from the neighborhood to be, uh, to the interior of the site to reduce this. This was also determined to be more relevant to their future site plan review of the project. There was some procedural discussion about if it were possible for the board to vote no on the recommendation until the rezoning and site plan review could be considered simultaneously, and they didn't have confidence that this bundling could occur, so they dropped it. They have broad support for their transition to cleaner power. I'm personally, um, very supportive of this zoning change because I do, as Counselor Marcelo stated, uh, believe that the, uh, that Crowley and the city will make sure that this is a, uh, aesthetically, uh, protected space, but this is a transformative project, not just for mitigating a climate crisis, but will be a financial, a huge financial benefit for the city of Salem. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, on the motion for adoption for first passage of zoning ordinance and map amendment to rezone the parcel at 67 Derby Street in residential, two-family, to industrial districts, to be rezoned to all industrial districts? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Proznywski?
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hatworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes. Thank you. On the first passage of zoning ordinance amendment, map change to rezone parcel at 67 Derby Street from R2 to industrial? We have nine members voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent. Matter carries. Petitions?
We have petition from National Grid to install one pole on Bridge Street, and this is for pole number 2972.
Hearing ordered for February 23rd, 2023. Further petitions?
We have a petition from National Grid to install one jointly-owned pole on Endicott Street.
Hearing ordered for February 23rd, 2023. Further petitions?
We have a petition from National Grid to install one pole on Bridge Street, and this is for pole 598.
Hearing ordered for February 23rd, 2023. I will just note, I will be reaching out to National Grid prior to those hearings. Further petitions?
We have a request from HAC to hold a, um, road race walk run for HAC in use of city streets on June 4th, 2023.
Counselor Hatworth?
Thank you, President Stott. I move that this be granted.
Counselor Hatworth moves that this be granted. Under discussion?
Thank you, President Stott. Uh, it's a great annual event and looking forward to it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor for the request from HAC to hold a road race in use of city streets on June 4th, 2023? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have a request for mental makeover to hold a road race. The world needs you here, road race, in use of city streets on July 30th, 2023.
Counselor Hatworth?
Thank you, Madam President. I move this be granted.
Counselor Hatworth moves that this be granted. Any discussion?
No further discussion.
Any further discussion? On Counselor Hatworth's motion for the request for mental makeover to hold a road race on July 30th, 2023, that this be granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have the following list of license applications for public guides, taxi operators, and taxi cabs.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counselor Marcelo moves that these be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counselor Marcelo's motion that the following license applications are granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have four claims.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be referred to the Committee on Ordinance, Licenses, and Legal Affairs.
Counselor Marcelo moves that this be referred to the Committee on Ordinance, Licenses, and Legal Affairs. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On moving the claims to Committee on Ordinance, Licenses, and Legal Affairs, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further petitions?
We have three drain layer contract operator licenses.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move that these be granted.
Counselor Marcelo moves these be granted. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On the following drain license, drain layer contract operator licenses be granted, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Unfinished business?
We have a second passage of a zoning ordinance relative to accessory buildings and structures and affordable accessory dwelling units.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move for adoption for second and final passage by roll call vote.
Counselor Marcelo moves for adoption for second passage by roll call vote. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Varela?
Yes.
Counselor Proznywski?
Yes.
Counselor Marcelo?
Yes.
Counselor Merkel?
Yes.
Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Hatworth?
Yes.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Counselor Cohen?
Yes.
And Counselor Stott?
Yes. On the second passage of a zoning ordinance relative to accessory buildings and structures and affordable accessory dwelling units? We have nine members voting, nine in the affirmative, one absent. Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of a traffic ordinance relative to Handicap Park and Nursery Street.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move for adoption for second passage.
Counselor Marcelo moves for adoption for second passage. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counselor Marcelo's motion for adoption for second passage for the handicapped zone at, um, Nursery Street in front of Number 11? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of a traffic ordinance relative to Handicap Park and repeal Ocean Ave West.
Counselor Marcelo?
Thank you, President. I move for adoption for second passage.
Counselor Marcelo moves for adoption for second passage. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On Counselor Marcelo's motion for adoption for second passage for the repeal, um, on Ocean Ave West, all those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of a traffic ordinance relative to service zones on Congress Street.
Counselor Marcelo? No, I'm sorry. Counselor Proznywski?
Thank you, President Stott. Section 13, Article 1 amended, um, that on Congress Street, the service zones on the Westerly side of Congress Street at a point beginning 40 feet north of the intersection Levitt Street and extended northward for 20 feet, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and I'm moving for adoption for second passage.
Counselor Proznywski moves for adoption for second passage. Any discussion?
No discussion.
On adoption for second passage for the service zone on Congress Street, all those in favor? All is opposed? Matter carries. Further unfinished business?
We have a second passage of a traffic ordinance relative to parking prohibited on certain streets and certain times on Ocean Terrace.
Counselor Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. I move adoption for second passage.
Counselor Cohen moves for adoption for second passage. Any discussion?
Let's do it.
Further discussion? On Counselor Cohen's motion for adoption for second passage on a traffic ordinance relative to parking prohibited on certain streets and certain times, Ocean Terrace? All those in favor? All those opposed? Matter carries. Anything further? Counselor Dominguez?
Thank you, President Stott. I move for adjourn.
Counselor Dominguez moves for adjournment. All those in favor? We are adjourned.